Heavenly Father, on this wet and windy day, we thank you that you are the faithful God. Just as the seasons faithfully turn at their time each year, we know that you are our faithful God watching over us and protecting us, and we thank you for your watchful care over Fergus Falls, and we continue to ask you for your grace and your compassion on us. Lord, we also lift up this meeting tonight. I pray for unity and wisdom and even joy as the details of the city are spoken about and decided on tonight. We ask for your hand of guidance as decisions are being made. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, October 21st, 2019, and I'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business is approval of the agenda, and I know there's a couple slight changes that I'm aware of. First of all, Item F, under petitions and communication, the Legislative Distinction Award, we're going to put that off for two weeks just because I spoke with Senator Engel Britson over the weekend, and he would like to be here if possible, so we're just going to wait two weeks and hopefully he's able to join us for that. And then, under new business, there's a transportation letter of support that Brian, our city engineer, Brian Yvaro, will discuss with us. I don't know of any other changes to the agenda. Bill, are you aware of any?
Not aware of any.
I know Anthony wants to pull Item Number 10 in the consent, but we'll get to that when we get to the agenda. So I would look for a motion approving the amended agenda.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings, this evening, we have a public hearing to consider lowering the speed zone on Alcott Avenue from Martin Street to Alcott, to the roundabout, I'm sorry, from Martin Street to the roundabout to 30 miles an hour. I'll call our city engineer, Brian Yvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, and members of this council. This particular item has been discussed for some time with the city council dating back 2016 and even previously before that. If you look on the map right here before you, you can see one prominent feature is a roundabout located in the left side of your screen. The road running east-west there is Alcott Avenue, and we've mapped out the existing current sign speed limits along this corridor. I'm going to revert back to 2016. At that time, a request was made to Otter Tail County, who is the current jurisdictional authority for that road. That has since changed. As of July 19th, the city, Fergus Falls, is the road jurisdiction for this particular corridor. That being said, that we have the local authority to make these changes at this time now to 30 mile an hour. The request back in 2016 was to lower the speed limits from the current postings of 45 miles an hour between the roundabout to the west and Martin Street and maintain a 30 mile an hour zone throughout. So this is a requested action before you. At this time, I'm requesting open a public hearing to, public notice was issued out in a general paper, and we're just opening up for any comments in regards to this decision.
Thank you, Brian. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue, please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. City, no one, we will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. You're looking for a resolution, Brian?
I got some comments, Your Honor. I've actually heard from a number of residents that are kind of wondering if we have to go all the way from 45 to 30 and whether there was an interim, just because of kind of the density of housing on there isn't as great as it is from Martins. And I mean, they were proposing kind of either 35 or 40 miles per hour for that stretch. And I know, as I travel on that road every day, it's also kind of when you're leaving town, it's easier to maintain 30 coming in than it is going out.
For you.
But I mean, it was kind of, I mean, but I think a number of people are kind of equally have that kind of concern of, you know, do we need to go all the way down to 30?
Certainly.
I've also gotten a couple of comments about that, too, where a couple of people that live along there say, why would you speed it up at all if there's 30 degrees or 30 miles an hour on both ends? Just keep it 30 all the way through. So, there's both sides.
Sure. Brian, did you have any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, looking back into meeting minutes and everything, if you recall, a lot of this, these legs of Tower Road, including Tower Road to the north and everything, was done, a speed study was conducted at the time, and the 85th percentile typically comes up when you talk about speed studies. The speed studies at those times in 2016 supported no changes, which is showing here right now. And therefore, at that time, we submitted comments to Otter Tail County. However, they maintained their stance with the 85th percentile in the speed studies at those times. What did come up through some of those discussions was if Melody Lane was the demarcation, we could, instead of maintaining a 30 mile an hour corridor, could we use Melody Lane pretty much bisecting, running north and south, as that transition from 30 increasing to 45? So, for instance, if you're coming out of the roundabout up to 45, but deaccelerate to 30 mile an hour at Melody Lane. There's a few configurations, but I always do stress consistency when it comes to traffic, traffic flows.
Certainly. Thanks, Brian. Jim?
I think one of the other things, one of the complaints they had, too, was the people biking and walking in that one area. There really isn't a whole lot of room.
That is correct, and part of this, with some of the discussion, was making improvements crossings at Martin Street that we're looking at as a separate project, but you're absolutely correct. That's why we kind of figured with the existing in-slope topography on Alcott Avenue, let's look at other places. Since then, development has happened to the north, River Oaks Landing, a trail system has been added, along with Sherwood's, I believe that's West Side Drive, has been also implemented, too. So the thought process was kind of maybe perhaps avoid Alcott and start using some of these ancillary streets for that pedestrian crossings in those areas.
Thank you, Brian. Couple of questions. Have you received any written comments?
No, I have not.
No written comments? And then, just let us, what's the process here? So we have the public hearing tonight. Are you looking for, are you going to come back with a recommendation on a resolution, or are you looking for that tonight?
It's pretty much requesting looking at tonight. You know, we're discussing this, wasn't back in 2016, the request to Otter Tail County, so I guess we'd be maintaining that throughout the years that has been, you know, some of the significance of reducing this to 30 mile an hour. So at this time, I was requesting holding the public hearing and then request directing staff to make the necessary adjustments to the speed limits.
And do you have, does staff have a recommendation on, is it 30? Is it no change? Is it somewhere in between?
At this time, for consistency, I would maintain a 30 mile an hour from the roundabout to Martin Street.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Can I just add something?
Yes, Chief, please do.
Brian or Ralph can correct me, but as a city, I believe by statute, we can only set 30. So your question was, can we do 40? And I believe by statute, as a city, we can only do 30 unless we do a speed study and the Commissioner of Transportation authorizes us to give some other speed limit other than 30 miles an hour. So that would be...
And if I can add to that, not to add too much confusion, just recently, you know, legislature authorized reducing speed limits to 30 mile an hour. That is not a part of this subject right now. That's going to require, if we're ever viewing, looking at that, that we're going to have to establish a policy at that time, but at the request right now is to maintain the 30 mile an hour speed zone through that, this corridor.
Thank you. So, Brett?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of the 30 mile an hour because, I mean, people, you're talking about wanting to go up faster. The only problem is, as soon as you get to the roundabout, you're supposed to be doing 15 anyway. So what's the use of one mile or whatever it is going all the way up to 40 and then just coming right back down to 15 to get into the roundabout? So, I mean, it's 30 at one end, 15 at the other. I mean, we might as well just keep it, I'm, you know, in favor of keeping it 30 all the way through.
Would someone like to offer a resolution, directing staff to take the steps to make this a 30 mile an hour zone?
Yeah, I'll offer the resolution and keep discussion going for a moment.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, you know, originally, I would have leaned more towards what Anthony was saying about, I mean, it's kind of on the edge of town, and if, you know, once you get to say, you know, Melody, you know, if it was 45, you know, then it's not as densely populated and the like. But I had never really looked at it from the perspective that Caroline and Brent brought
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
up of, I mean, it's 30 on both ends, so you're just, you're going to speed up to 45 and
Thank you, Brian. There are no bids to award this evening.
then you're coming to just about a stop at the roundabout if you're going that way.
Under the consent agenda, there's a copy in your packet, as well as Lynn has one on,
So, especially if we, if 30 or 45 is our choice, I think I would probably lean more
or she will have one, there she has one on the board for us.
towards 30, just, I mean, it's just safer.
Anthony's requested Item Number 10 be removed. Thanks, Tom. If there's any other items people would like removed, I would, if not, I would entertain Any other thoughts, comments, before we call for the question?
But I will, one more thing, too. I will, you know, somebody mentioned, like Jim mentioned, the bike access and pedestrian
a resolution approving the consent agenda minus Item Number 10.
access.
I'll make that.
It is very convenient to take the trail, you know, right after the bridge and cut across
Thank you. Brent?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Caroline? Roll call, please.
so you can bypass Alcott altogether, for the most part, or go up to the sidewalk or
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Yes.
go through the hill crest.
Yes.
I don't know if that's allowable, but, so there is a good option for staying off of
Ruffer?
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved.
Alcott that works well.
Item Number 10 is a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat of the proposed Thanks. And just as long as we're talking about public input and comments received and bike and pedestrian Lot 1, Block 1, Westridge Mall Theater Edition, as requested by Westridge Mall Limited Partnership. Anthony, you had a question? traffic, again, I'll just put the plug in for the crosswalk that I have people ask me
My question is, is as much that, before we should grant this plat amendment, was,
about on Martin. Just there's...
We've reviewed that. I'd like to do a few concrete improvements there. We'd have to install some pedestrian amps and do some advisory signage for crossing
I wanted to know where was Westridge Mall Limited Partnership in terms of their taxes
and that, but something we typically have done past.
and their utility bills, and are they up to speed or up to date, or do they owe us any
Thanks. Thanks, Brian. Roll call, please.
money?
No.
My feeling is that if they owe us money, then we should obviously have some agreement
Fish?
Yes.
Pinkbird?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ruffer?
whereby they're going to pay us and bring us current.
Bill, do you want to...
I can address a little bit. I certainly don't know amounts, but I know they are not current on their utility bill. I don't know what the amount is. I know he made some payments on that, but, and as far as taxes, I don't know where that's at. We'd have to check the county website on that, where that's at. So this would be, so if I'm understanding correctly, this would be dealing with the theater portion, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, from what I understand, it's, we're going to separate out a piece of their property, which would allow them to sell it. Well, if they're going to sell it, then, you know, the taxes are not current, the utility bill's not current, we would be, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to, you know, get current. So I would, I'd like to make a resolution or a motion that, before we approve this, that we know that they're current with their taxes and their utility.
Sure. So this is a motion, basically just to be to delay until we can find out where they're at?
Correct.
And is there a timing issue that any staff is aware of that would not allow us to wait two weeks? Because my concern is, is that this is for the benefit of the movie theater, so I don't want to, you know, I totally understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity to expand the movie, you know, the movie theater.
Mine would be for the benefit of the citizens of Fergus Falls, too, in a sense of, you know, they owe us money.
Do you need a second on that motion before we go further? Was that a motion, correct?
Yep, it was a motion.
I'll second that, so then we can have more discussion. Ryan, did you, on the timing issue, did you have a comment?
Well, I would just note that this was a preliminary plat and a final plat application together, so we have 120-day review process for a preliminary plat, and I think the deadline for review was, I think, January 9th of 2020. So we're on a 120-day deadline to approve or deny the plat.
So there's time. So we have time.
Your Honor, I got a question on that. So could we, to Mr. Hicks's point, can you make a contingency on this, on them coming current? Because obviously, if they were to sell or that portion of the mall off, can we have a contingency on approving the plat for them to pay us? What I envision is, if they haven't paid us, they don't have the money, but they would after the sale. But can you make a contingency on that, or a contingent? Or how's that work? I do have an answer for that, but I don't necessarily want to give out legal advice at this point.
Fair enough.
It can wait.
It can wait. I think the best approach is simply to delay a decision until, put it off for two weeks, and we'll have more information, and maybe between now and then, a conversation could be had as well.
I mean, I think it would be, you know, this is a, you know, there's not many opportunities you have to leverage, and this is one of those, so...
Just your motion, I just want to make sure that, I think your motion said that we wouldn't approve the plat until they were current, but I think, well, what I would like, I mean, and that's your motion, if we need to vote on that, I guess, bring back more information so we can make that decision would be, you know, not to tie our hands saying that absolutely right now we won't plat until we're current, right? I don't know for, not knowing the numbers and not knowing the amounts, not knowing the situation on the movie theater side, I don't know if we want to tie our hands with that, right? I mean, I'm not saying we wouldn't go there, but I'd like to have the information first.
My preference would be is to not take that contingent action. I would take action that would just simply table this for two weeks.
I'd be willing to accept that.
So, do we need a different motion?
I mean, I think we'd correct the motion to just delay for two weeks whilst we collect the information.
You're okay with that, Justin?
Yep.
Okay, everyone fine? Understand what we're voting on? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Ben? Thank you. Yes, Scott?
Since Number 10 was pulled off, one other comment I thought I'd make while we're researching it, just for, since this is the topic. The plat also had approaches to the south, to the street to the south. What's the name of the street to the south? Western Avenue, maybe?
Western, yeah. Is that correct?
And I was just wondering if it was necessary for that to be included in the plat, since it's not part of the initial, I mean, they're not going to do anything with it, it's one of these, you know, someday kind of deals. Well, I think we could approve it once someday comes, not necessarily approve it now. And, so I'd like to just have a little more information on that and if it was possible to...
Bring that back in two weeks.
Yeah.
My understanding, I was not here on Wednesday when this was presented, as you know, but I, from my understanding, that...
It wasn't presented.
It wasn't presented.
Oh, okay, so I guess I didn't miss anything. But it's my understanding that that approach is part of his plans in order, or the plans of the theater to expand.
To have access.
Right. To have access.
And I can imagine that some of the property owners along there thought they were on a, you know, not a commercial street, so to speak, and might have some issues with it. So I thought it would be worth looking at.
Sure. We can bring back more information on that as well.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. All right. Under ordinances and resolutions, tonight, we have a first reading. Ordinance 92, 7th series, deed demo loan and deed cleanup revolving loan, and I'll call on our finance director and acting city administrator, Bill Somar. Good evening, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor, our council. So in your packet, we have an ordinance that we'd like to have a first reading on, and this is for putting in place those Department of Employment and Economic Development loans. We have two loans that we have approval for. One, we have the official approval, and that is the demolition loan for $851,510. That's a loan for 15 years at 2% with no payments of principal or interest, so interest is not accruing as well in those first two years. And 50% could possibly be forgiven in the future when development were to occur. So this is for the dairy project, is what we're talking about. So that's the first loan. So $851,510 is within the $2 million amount that I've put in this ordinance. The second one, we, the cleanup revolving loan, it's also through deed. We have tentative approval of that amount. We are waiting for final written approval from the Environmental Protection Agency, and $780,000 of that program would be forgiven. So $450,000 would apply towards that $2 million that we have in this ordinance. Now, the remaining, to get up to $2 million, is $698,490. Now, within that, there's $365,000 that we had in sources and use of schedules that we've given out over the past for this dairy project, that we haven't figured out the funding for that portion yet. So I wanted to include that in here, and then I rounded it up, and yes, rounded it up rather largely, to $2 million, because I wanted the city and the port authority to have some flexibility. One, when we get bids in, either prices could go up or they could go down. So by setting at 2 million doesn't mean that we'll have to issue bonds to get us to 2 million, but it gives that flexibility to do that. Now, this resolution, or this introduction of this ordinance, would be authorizing the port authority then to go out and implement these two loans, as well as the authority to bond for the $698,000. So you would be giving that authority. Then the port authority would go through the process of passing a resolution, getting that structure in place for each one of those loans separately, and then we'd have to look at a separate bond if that was the case. And then it'll come back to the city council again, that you would ratify what the port authority comes up with on that. So ordinance first, have a first reading, then a second reading, and then a 15-day publication before it's effective, then port authority action with a resolution, and then back to the city council for another resolution. So that's kind of the quick summary on that. We went over it with the port authority as well tonight, to give them an update, too, what was coming before you tonight.
Thank you. And we need someone to introduce that this evening, if someone would like to do that?
I'll do that, Your Honor. I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. We're going to skip to Number 3, just because I know Eric Antonessen has to pick up his daughter at 6 o'clock, and he's going to talk to us about this DNR, no child left inside grant. So Eric, it's all you.
Eric Antonessen, I'm here on behalf, well, I'm a board member of the Otter Tail Nordic Ski Association. I'm also a member of the Minnesota, or the local chapter of the Minnesota Youth Ski League. And on Wednesday, there is a grant that is opening. It's a DNR grant. It opens at 9:00 a.m. It's a first-come, first-served grant. Whenever the money's gone, it's gone. It's for $500 up to $5,000. And MYSL and Otter Tail Nordic is here to ask the city if they would be willing to submit a grant in the amount of $5,000 for a ski groomer. The past few years, the DNR has groomed a ski trail out at Lake Alice, when able. We also have some plans, and we haven't been able to come to you yet with the plan to pitch it to you, but to open up a trail maybe of, where they do Summer Fest up at the Kirkbride. We've looked at, could we do something at the dairy property? But one thing you need in order to get a groomer, or get a ski trails, you need a groomer. Otter Tail Nordic Ski Association would be willing to submit the grant on behalf of you. It's actually not a very tough grant, pretty short, pretty easy. But we could go ahead and fill it out and submit it. Our thought is that the groomer would be owned by the city, but Otter Tail Nordic has some equipment that could pull the groomer. We also have volunteers that would be willing to go out and groom on a regular basis at this point. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer what I can. If you give us the thumbs up, I'll go ahead and submit something at 9:00 a.m. or 9:01 a.m. on Wednesday morning.
Thanks, Eric. Does anyone have any questions? Scott, did you have?
I'd just like to make the comment that I think this is a terrific opportunity, and if you, I'd like to submit the resolution or offer the resolution. I have a little bit of history in that I worked with Walt Speedall for many years, and I think that, you got to give a shout out to Walt and his history of being involved in this sport in the county. I think if it wasn't for Walt, we probably wouldn't be talking about this right now.
You bring up the Speedalls, and I do want to say that we've talked with Speedalls. The Speedalls have been supportive of efforts to get ski trails in town, because they think that if additional people are out skiing, they'll also go out to their Speedall ski guard out north of town, and so...
Thanks, Eric. So we have a resolution? Jim, you wanted to second that?
I'll second it, yes.
Jim, thank you. We have a resolution to say, any other questions of Eric? I just want to say thank you, Eric, for the work of the group. I hope the application is successful. I hope the vote here is successful. We'll find out in a second. So, roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, that resolution is approved. Thanks, Eric, and good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Item Number 2 is a second reading, ordinance 87, 7th series, relating to interim uses. This has been the committee. It's been introduced. We've discussed it. If there's any questions, I'll direct them to our city attorney. If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. That ordinance is approved, I'm sorry, ordinance. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,097,490.5. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director. If not, is there a resolution?
If there's a resolution, pay the bills.
I'll second.
Jim? Thank you. Krista? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Pinkbird?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous announcements, just a reminder, a week from today, at 4 o'clock here in the council chambers, there's a work session relating to the sales tax check-in meeting. And then, October 30th is the committee hall, and November 4th is our next city council meeting. One other announcement, the Downtown Riverfront Council just asked me to remind people that November 12th is a event, a mayor-to-mayor event with the mayor of Red Wing, Sean Dowsley, along with the new economic development coordinator for Otter Tail Power, Matt Marshall, to interim uses, this has been the committee, it's been introduced, we've discussed it, if there's any questions, I'll direct them to our city attorney, if not, roll call, please.
Hicks. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinkbird.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. That ordinance is approved, I'm sorry, ordinance. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,097,490.5 and five cents, and if there's any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director. If not, is there a resolution?
Well, for the resolution, pay the bills.
I'll second.
Jim? Thank you. Krista? Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinkbird.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports, or reports from staff or administrative officers, there is no older unfinished business. Under new business, our city engineer has an item relating to a transportation letter of support. Brian?
Yes, thank you, Honor. This is a new business item that's come up, it's a transportation alternative, so a station for greater Minnesota. This is a program, we've applied for this before on, when it comes to our trail applications. There's another project that has kind of been developed and everything, and we're particularly looking at the intersection of Union and Stanton Avenue, through the planning for the downtown riverfront master plan in other areas. We've defined this as a particular intersection that we could have as a need for desirable for pedestrian improvements, this can be done in a number of ways, bump bumps, traffic coming devices, what have you. Spoken to our consultant, they do some of these applications and everything, but they say, think, believe this is a good candidate for this program. So therefore, at this time, all I'm requesting is a letter of support via resolution to support, to submit a letter of intent, which is due October 31st, to the Transportation Alternatives Panel. By submitting the letter of intent, this will determine if the funding application should proceed, or if the project is not aligned with the project goals. So at this time, simple request, just requesting this letter of support with this resolution.
Thank you. Brian, any questions?
That's a good idea.
Good idea with someone, with that, is that a...
Yep, I'll offer that.
Thank you, Anthony. Caroline?[1697.76]